Do you ever get that mixed up between the two really? I'll say hello.
He says it different depending on which one it is sometimes.
Really?
I do. No, I just.
That was kind of quick. Mics are hot.
You can text me if I.
Yeah.
Screw up.
We're good. I'm I'm grateful that it finally works. I too got to. Was he wasn't connected to the internet for anything, so.
Yeah.
So the audit's done. Sheila. The audit's done and we're working on next year's project process.
I just had my next year's audit meeting.
Oh, my God. That is all in charge of it. Did that feel good or not?
Um, it is. I'm just getting things organized.
Yeah, good.
I was thinking we were particularly late today, so maybe then maybe.
We probably days.
Well, it's okay to have front of work.
Shell shunt.
Yeah.
Is the mayor in?
He's not. But Commissioner Reed's on.
I'm probably.
I don't think he was.
And it's just a lot of them.
Okay, it's four o'clock, so we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is the July sixth, twenty twenty two administrative meetings. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Sorry, Mayor Protem, I was having trouble with my mic. City Attorney Doctor.
Here.
Interim City Manager Burton.
Your.
Mayor Protem Dean.
Here.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Commissioner Logan.
Your.
And for the record, Mayor Protem, Mayor Collins is excused this evening.
Thank you. All right, we will first move on to commission comments and questions and then we will move to an update from the interim city manager. So first, are there any commission comments or questions on any item?
Mayor Protem.
Commissioner Reed.
Just for the record, I can't really hear in this room. I've made that clear several times, so I can't really hear you. I certainly can't hear most of the other people in the room, so if people could do their best to speak up, I would be grateful. Thank you.
I think what we'll do is we are gonna, we added another mic in the room, so we will bring it one closer to Commissioner Logan and I, and then maybe if the other one, we can just rotate around.
I have a certain reputation.
Stop spoken. Commissioner Reed, is that better?
Sort of, it depends on the person. I'll do my best, thanks.
Okay, if you just want to let us know, we'll just move them around the room. If there's one particular person you can't hear as well, we'll just start rotating those two mics to be directly in front of that person. Any other comments or questions from the commission? Okay, we are going to move on to an update from interim city manager Burton regarding the damage assessment after this weekend's very, I think, unexpected and their severity storms. So interim city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. And what I'd like to do is just go around the room with various department heads that have been making their assessments, because there's probably even more updated information since the last time we spoke. And if we could, David, I think you're online. Could you start out, please?
Yes, thanks, city manager, mayor, commissioners. We're continuing to assess the damage over the past, from the past weekend. The biggest concern right now is we just ended up having to close portions of Front Street because the, as the water is receding in the soil, it's starting to settle, and it looks like we have pretty significant washout underneath the asphalt itself. So we've closed the northbound lane between fourteenth and fifteenth. We're expecting most likely that we're probably gonna end up closing that whole section there. We're just gonna try to get some equipment in there so we can remove the asphalt, open it up, and then provide access to the adjacent businesses if it keeps settling like it is. Right now, you know, we're looking, if it's just the asphalt in the roadway itself, you know, looking at seventy to a hundred thousand dollars, but if it gets back farther into the sidewalk and the concrete, it, the cost will go up significantly. So as far as around town, we're sweeping up the debris that washed down from the sidewalk or from the alleys and other dirt streets. The crews are making their way through town, so that's that's ongoing. And then we are also have our road graders out and another crew out putting in material in alleys that washed out or dirt roads that washed out. So kind of a threefold approach to this. We'll hope to have some better numbers for you once we get the asphalt opened up there on Front Street.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Now I'd like to move to Brad.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Commissioners. So far, we've completed an assessment of most of Mountain Helena City Park, and we do have some fairly excessive damage on some different trails, especially some of the trails lower down, closer to the neighborhoods, closer to Holter Street, but significant damage on nineteen oh six trail and the new accessible trail. And tomorrow, we'll continue that assessment onto Mount Ascension. So we're gonna come up the strategy this week on how we're gonna balance our maintenance plans and address the trails. So far, we haven't seen any safety hazards. It's just trails that are, you know, less usable from the standpoint of material washed away. So we'll come up the strategy and get working. We, Gruber Excavating delivered granite for the accessible trail up to the parking area today, and we'll start spreading that tomorrow and get that trail back up to where it was.
And now, Mayor Protem, we go facilities.
So for facilities, we did bridges norm pretty well. The city town ability had some water that through the stormwater system, the gutters came up through our floor drains and did have some minor flooding in the basement, but no damage, no. They had a few file boxes that got down. Other than that, staff was able to get that cleaned up and sure. Law Justice Center, it was very similar in the basement, in a specific area. Stormwater came up through the sinks and had some water on the floor. Grand Street Theater, they reported they had jingles block the roof, and they had some some minor issues with water in the basement, stored here. And then the Chaver Building, they had that conference room that's kind of below sidewalk level. As that water came over the sidewalk, it went into their conference room under the door, and we were able to just extract that curb. That was all of the damages, the damage, not really any damage, but all of the water issues. Mayor Protem, the Director of Public Works.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. With the stormwater system, it actually performed. We didn't have any collapses or any big catastrophic failures. It was just too much water too quickly, so we had a lot of backup. We can only put so much into a straw, and we ended up getting a lot of dams, and some of the debris that came off the trees in the parks clogged our inlets, so we just blame parks, not just. But, you know, we had a lot of backup. We didn't have a ton of damage except on Front Street because of all the hydraulic head that we were getting because of the storm that came in, and it lifted some of the manhole, and the damage on Front Street actually came out of the stormwater and lifted the the street. So that's where we're getting the problem that we have with streets right now, but we didn't have any catastrophic failures that we have been able to find. We are going around to areas that of the older pipes and TVing them, and we have not seen anything yet, so we should, we're in status quo fix. Other than that, with the wastewater is with this, we had a bunch of inflow that came into our system either through the manhole, or what we're finding out now is that some of these areas and older buildings have their roof drains connected to their wastewater system internally, such as the Law and Justice, when you hear of water coming out of the, out of the sinks, it's not actually backing up our sewers. We didn't have any notice of any sewer backups. It is that the service line got overwhelmed and couldn't handle it, so all the water is coming from the the roof drains, and that's how they got hail in people's basements and in bathrooms and stuff like that. So it wasn't actually the sewer system that was failing. It was the roof drains, which would be good if we could get them disconnected. It'd be good for everyone if you could separate both of those, and we don't allow that anymore, but we do have a lot of older buildings, so that's what we're seeing. And we saw at the wastewater plant, an additional six hundred thousand gallons come in. So we went from about three million gallons a day to three point six million gallons today with an instantaneous peak of just over sixteen million gallons. So it washed out a lot of our headworks because with that type of velocity, it actually helps our system in a little bit of way because it scours it out. We have to go in there and jet it anyway. We did a self-jutting with this one, but all the rags and other things that are in the sewer itself plugged up our bar screen and we had backup in our headworks building, but it is concrete. We experienced that, so it's just washed down and cleaned it up, and we have another basin for anything that is overflow, so it handled it fine, and we didn't have any failures or discharges from that site. And even with this event, our stormwater system handles it so well. We did not discharge to any of our outlets, so Brickley Bear did not see any stormwater from this event, and that's a big event.
Mayor Protem, thank you, Director. Chief.
Troy talked about our LJC, Law Justice Center, our dispatch center. We have windows on the outside that have been leaking for a little while, but we received some rain in the server room, some water. I wouldn't say flooding, was able to get mopped up and then in our conference room, so a little bit of damage. Our operations manager often will speak with the airport about getting that cleaned up, fixed. Mayor Protem, if you don't mind, with you and the commission, if I could share some numbers from our dispatch center. During that time when we have an event like this, public safety gets pretty overwhelmed because it happened so quickly, just like everything you're seeing here. And one thing, our dispatch center, the first two hours before the storm, there was just, and I say just, I know Zach's probably listening, but we just had forty five calls into the dispatch center. Eight of those were nine one one calls, and then twenty three of those calls were made into calls for service. Call for services simply when they come in and we have to send a either fire, police, or some other entity onto a call. A call for services made, it's basically a responding unit goes to that. So there's twenty three calls for serving. When the storm hit from about six thirty up until about eight thirty, the amount of calls to dispatch tripled. There was a hundred and thirty calls. Thirty one of those were nine one one calls, and then fifty five calls were, CFSs were created for responding agencies, HPD, county, rural fire, east town of police. So I just wanted to share those numbers. We had two dispatchers in the center at the time, and our operations manager came in. We had staff because they're changing right at seven, because they're working twelve hours. So they change at seven, that's a time to change. Our, our outgoing dispatcher stayed for a little while, helped cover. Our incoming jumped in early to help out because they saw what was going on, and everyone out there, hand to hand, did a great job of getting calls to spur. So it was one of those events where it just happens and you go with what you get in the moment. So just wanted to share those with you.
Thank you, Chief. Mayor Protem, that's it. I think what an unusual event. I don't know that any of us have never experienced an event like that, at least in our tenure here. And I just want to thank these directors and all the people that worked for them because they were out and about right on the spot. And I think that they did a good job in terms of responding and recovery and really considering the event. The city and its infrastructure, and I know that there's other damage in the private sector, but as a city, we really, really fared pretty well considering what could have happened, so. Madam Chair, if there's any questions, we'll attempt to answer them, otherwise that's our report.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions or comments for staff regarding this item? Yes, Commissioner Logan.
Thank you. This question is for Director Knopki. David, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, I've been told I mutter. So the closure on Front Street, how's the public get its notification of that?
We'll work with the PIO. It just, it really started settling this afternoon, why we've been keeping an eye on it. So we'll get a press release out to everyone. The closure shouldn't, I mean, it's only gonna affect northbound traffic at this point. We tried to leave all the business accesses open as much as we safely could, but starting next week, we'll be sending out another PSA informing them that they'll probably be closed entirely for while we get that asphalt out of there and then do some mitigation work and then open it back up with some temporary paving ramps to to those parking lots, so the businesses can access it as usual. They'll just be driving on a gravel surface.
Thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner Reed, any questions?
No, I'll just briefly say thank you to all the staff and everyone who worked on the response. It was very well handled considering how quick and unexpected it was, so thank you.
I just echo those comments. Lots of folks who were picking up branches out of their yards in my neighborhood, multiple people commented on how quickly they saw city vehicles and trucks from the fire department and police department and parks and streets. So really appreciate how quickly everyone responded, and I think it gave everyone some peace of mind to know that the city was was so responsive. I did also just briefly want to note that the city manager mentioned some of the private businesses and nonprofits that were also impacted within their properties. I know that the Helena Area Community Foundation has started a flash flood relief fund that's available for for nonprofits that experience damage. And then I believe there are a couple private entities, including the Montana Business Assistance Connection, that have had some conversations about some resources and support that might be available for some private entities that need support. So I'm grateful that no one was hurt, but what a strange twenty minutes that was. Okay, we'll go ahead and move on into presentations. The first presentation is Housing Solutions, a presentation for the proposed Valley View Village project.
And so, hi, Mayor and Commission. I'm Kara Snyder, the Housing Coordinator, and I would just like to take a minute to introduce Alex Burkhalter with Housing Solutions LLC. Housing Solutions has been invited by the Montana Board of Housing to submit a full application for housing tax credits later this summer to help fund this project. It's gonna be a thirty one unit senior affordable housing development, and no commission action is necessary at this point, but we would like to request that after Alex gives us a little bit more information that we hold a public comment period that Alex can then use to submit with his application to the Montana Board of Housing. So I guess with that, I'll just go ahead and introduce Alex, and he'll give us a little bit more information about the project and then also be available to answer questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Protem, members of the commission, Alex Burkhalter from Housing Solutions. Now, and I guess I did have a presentation, it's the same slides that were included in your package there. Do I, would you like me to present that from here, or do you have that available there? I'm not sure the best way to do that.
Madam Clerk, do you have a?
I would actually prefer if Mr. Burkhalter could share his screen. You should have that ability.
Okay, I can do that. We will get that done here. All right, how are we looking?
We can see your presentation.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. Well, let me get started. As Kara said, Alex Burkhalter from Housing Solutions, good afternoon. Thank you for having us. I have to say, I was camping in the woods without cell service over the Fourth of July weekend, and when I got back, the first thing I heard from folks was, oh, my gosh, did you hear what happened at Helena? So glad to hear that no one's hurt and sounds like you've got a good team on it. But for our project, Valley View Village, I'm gonna move through this kind of quickly as you did receive the information ahead of time, and honestly, I'm usually answering questions is is what's best. But, and as Kara mentioned, no decisions or anything today. We're just looking for input a little bit later in the presentation. I kind of do a description of where we're at with the Board of Housing and how the process works. So with that, let's just get started. Again, my name is Alex Burkhalter, Housing Solutions. I've worked in housing tax credit development for eighteen years, based here, and I'm actually over in Missoula, Montana, although I love to get to Helena's office as I can to ride my mountain bike. I was glad to hear the trails are still passable. You guys have a real, real gem there. My first racing experience was actually the Helenduro a couple years ago. It was a Memorial Day that was very rainy, is what I remember. Here's a couple, just some examples of projects we've completed in the last four or five years, just to kind of get a feel for what we do. As Kara mentioned, our, our business is a develop, business of developing affordable rental housing. We do that using a program called Housing Tax Credits. It's a federal program that's administered by the individual states. It's a, it's a rare creature in that it has bipartisan support in Washington DC. It was actually a part of the tax reform that went through when Reagan was in office in eighty six. Nationally, ninety percent of affordable housing is developed with this program. I think the reason for its success is it's a strong public-private partnership, kind of the best of both worlds come together. It's not a rental subsidy where where the government is paying someone's rent or a portion of their rent, rather, it's a subsidy for the development. And, and basically where it work, the way it works is by bringing federal tax credits into a project, there's additional incentive for equity, which helps you develop a project with lesser debt, lesser debt, lesser loan payment. You can operate on lower rents. Who does a housing tax credit project serve? So federally, it's for those who are at or below sixty percent of area median income. Area median income is a number that's published by HUD each year. You can see on the screen or in your package, so the highest we could serve for a four-person household, that's kind of the standard, it's scaled by number of people in the household, but would be somebody making just under sixty thousand. So in the housing development world, we look at kind of different income bands of people, people who are at zero to thirty percent of area median income, they really need a rental subsidy. Housing tax credits is good at serving kind of forty to sixty percent, and we have a mix of residents who may or may not have a rental subsidy. So our typical resident is usually working an entry-level job, retail, restaurants, something like that, or in the case of this project, with an age restriction, elderly on a, on a fixed income. So most of our residents around the state are social security with maybe some equity from selling a house or a small pension, something like that. In Montana, housing credits are administered by the, well, they used to be the Montana Board of Housing. Now they sort of call themselves Montana Housing. It's a part of the Department of Commerce. It's a seven-person board appointed by the governor, and they, they run multiple programs, but with housing tax credits, they're taxed with not only selecting which projects to fund, but also monitoring them for ongoing compliance to make sure the buildings stay in good shape. We're only moving in when we should and that we're, we're charging the rents we've agreed to charge. One thing about housing tax credits, and you'll see in a minute, there's a very, very strong demand for the resource. Usually, we've got three to four dollars chasing every one dollar that's available. So no shortages need. When I started talking in the business, started in the business, talking with folks about need for affordable housing, it was never really a tough sell the last two years. I mean, it's on the tip of everyone's tongue what to do about housing. So as you can see, it's a strong, strong demand. In Montana, we usually see between the last, last couple of years, it's been down a little bit. I think that's partly how difficult it's been to get anything built, but between. I think that's partly how difficult it's been to get anything built. But between, I'd say 20 and 15. Projects requesting funds with dollars to fund for four to five per year. So behind the scenes or just part of what we've been working on. We submitted a letter of intent for a project in Helena, the one we're, we're talking with you here. That happened back in April, different developers advocating different projects all over the state did. In May, they, the Board of Housing narrowed it down to eight. That's part of their process. It's kind of. A first and second cut, so to speak. And Helena, our project, which we're calling Valley View Village, was selected to move forward. That's why we're, we're here today. So. In what'll happen. Is. But. So anyway, there was 12, the boards narrowed it down to eight. I actually heard that one of the projects, the one in Miles City is actually going to withdraw. So. This 31 unit project, which I'll tell you a little bit more about here, is now competing with most likely seven other projects. So Helena's chance, I think, is, is pretty good. That we'll be able to make this through. So that's a bit about tax credits, more than you probably ever wanted to know. And if you have any questions about tax credits, I'd be happy to answer them. So feel free to interrupt me or whatever works best. Now, specific to Helena, what we're proposing is, as Kara said, a 31 unit. Senior project. So for 55 and older or people with disabilities, the building will be three stories with an elevator. So all units will be zero step entry. We incorporate into the building, community spaces as well as an onsite manager's office. For billing about this, the manager will be three to four hours a day in the office and just ensure that things are going smoothly. We do try and incorporate some energy and green things into our buildings. You can see those listed there. Here's kind of a quick shot of just a schematic of the first floor of the building. You can see we've got some outdoor space, some community spaces. Where it's listed as a library on the second and third floor. That is the exercise room and a game room. Here's typical one-bedroom floor plan. There are one bedrooms, there are 600 square feet. The two bedrooms are real similar, just with a second bedroom on the other side. They're about 780 square feet. It's a plan we've built over the years and kind of continually refined. Of course, what's unique to every project is its location. We're still in the process of developing a final site plan, but we can show you where our site is. Just north of Prospect, it's, you know, close to many amenities. I. As my associate Tyler was looking for land for months, he came across this one. I said, do whatever it takes. Get that one. That, that's. That's a good senior spot. One of the great things about it is it's an infill site. So we're surrounded with infrastructure, water and sewer and. The zoning is actually correct for the site to allow multifamily development. So there won't be a lot to do there. But with a little bit about the building and the sites, maybe the, the real highlight here is affordability. What are these things going to rent for? We actually just got our full market study back. We have to commission a market study as part of our. Application. And. These units, if the, based on what they found in the market, if they were to rent at market rates, they would be 1,375. For the one bedroom and 15,035 for the two bedroom, which just. I've been in Montana for 25 years now, and every time I see these numbers, they just continue to blow me away. So that's what our units would rent for. Kind of our point of interest survey shows that market rents can be even higher for other projects. So. Being able to offer a one-bedroom for 650 with all utilities included. That's something we feel would be an asset for, for Helena and for seniors for many years to come. You can also see on the screen or on your slide there what the income limits are. For our residents and when they apply for apartment, we go through a verification process to make sure that they're under that limit. Again, here's some market information, although I feel like sharing this with you guys. This is why I said I could move quickly. You, I'm sure anecdotally and just hearing from friends and family. I'm preaching to the choir. You know how difficult the housing market is all over Montana, but. You know, Helen is, you guys made headlines nationally. I don't know. I'm sure you saw the Washington Post article or tool that sorted. Counties by rental increase over the pandemic. And Lewis and Clark County was fifth highest in the country for rental increases. So. That was, that was quite shocking. Part of the reason why we chose Helena, I mentioned, we're based in Missoula, but we work all over the state and frankly, surrounding states. One thing the Board of Housing looks to do is try and kind of spread the credits around to different communities. And it's been some years since Helen has had a senior project. They have had a couple of awards recently, the Fire Tower Apartments, I believe they call them, was an acquisition rehab. And then Rocky's Red Alder Project was several years ago. Those were both done with housing tax credits. But this is the, there hasn't been a new senior specific in the last 10 years. So where are we today? As I mentioned, we've been through the letter of intent and invitation to apply process. We'll be submitting our full application. First of August, and then the Board of Housing will make their selections in October. Should we get green lights all the way through with the funding? We'd hope to be in design, you know, in the fall and spring and starting construction next summer. So opening about 12 months after that. So with that, that's kind of the end of my presentation. The reason. Like she mentioned, why, why we're here is just part of our application of the Board of Housing is to collect any public comments or hear from. Officials on if there's a need in their community. Believe it or not, there was a time when sometimes people said no, but. So again, if you have any questions of me about the project or our company, I'd be happy to, happy to try and answer them.
Excellent. Thank you for that presentation. Are there any comments from the commissioners? Before I, I'll just note, thank you for this presentation. There, as you cited some of the data here, there is a clear need in Helena. So very excited for this project and one that's actually very near a lot of our healthcare facilities. So I think ideal in its location as well. To really hope that the Board of Housing will, will move you along. With that, I will open it up for public comment. Is there any public comment on the Valley View Village project? And sorry, if you wouldn't mind, stop sharing your screen just so we can see. Great, thank you so much. Madam Clerk, do you see any public comment online?
Mayor Pro Tem Commissioners, I have no hands raised online and I have no written public comment for this item.
We'll give folks just 20 more seconds, just to be sure. Any public comment? Great. Saying, no further public comment. We really appreciate your presentation. Do very much hope that this project moves forward and appreciate all your work on it so far.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to our next agenda item. This is Helena's strategic plan for waste reduction by Zero Waste Associates. Pursuant to the City of Helena's Resolution Number 20643. Works Director Ryan Leland. I think you're going to start us off.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. As you're aware, the resolution passed just over a year ago by the City Commission. In conjunction with the CCB, city staff hired Zero Waste to complete a strategic plan for waste reduction in the city of Helena. And it's been a pretty robust plan. We've gone a lot of public comments, a lot of meetings, and. We have come to this point to be able to present a final draft to you. And so with that, I will turn it over to Zero Waste Associates out of Missoula and Jeremy Drake will be the consultant working on the project.
Thank you, Ryan. Hello, Mayor Pro Tem, inner city manager and commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with me today. My name is Jeremy Drake. I'm with Zero Waste Associates in Missoula. I'm joined today in the attendees group online by Ruth Abbey. I think her name might say recycle smart schools on, on screen. And Rick Anthony, they're both also from Zero Waste Associates. Gary List and Amanda Waddell, who are on our team, were not able to attend here today. My colleagues and I have had the great privilege working with city staff. Helena Citizen Conservation Board members and a lot of folks in the Helena community to develop a strategic, strategic plan for waste reduction. We're really excited to share it with you today. Our agenda for this presentation, we will begin by looking at Helena's waste reduction goal. And briefly discussed, discuss the impacts of waste. From there, we'll dive into the planning processes, Ryan alluded to, give you a little more detail on that. And look at all the initiatives included in the plan and then review key takeaways that our team came away from this project with. So why are we here? We're here to help the city meet its goal as. Set forth in Resolution Number 20643 to develop a street strategic plan for waste reduction that will help the city meet. A minimum of 50% solid waste diversion from landfill by 2040, as well as an interim goal of 35% by 2030. Why waste? Impacts waste here. You know, waste reduction is one of the fastest, easiest and least expensive ways a community. Can reduce its climate impact. According to the EPA, 42% of US greenhouse gas emissions come from the provision of food and goods. And it's for this reason that trash can is now seen as a key target to address the climate crisis. What you're seeing here is called the wasteburg. It illustrates a very important concept, which is that. The materials that we manage downstream, recycling, composting, landfilling, they represent only a fraction of the upstream impacts. That are caused by extraction of, of raw materials, manufacturing and distribution of all the stuff that we use. So this means that recycling or composting one ton of material in Helena reduces one ton from Helena landfills. However, reducing the use of one ton of materials in Helena. Reduces 71 tons from landfill disposal all across the entire chain of production. So this source reduction that we're talking about results in the greatest greenhouse gas emissions reductions and pollution prevention of any material management strategy. So if you think about packaging, for instance, if we can find ways to eliminate unnecessary packaging, plastic packaging, perhaps. The impacts upstream, the benefits upstream can be significant. But we still need to think about what's going on in our, in our neighborhoods and our communities. So when we use these valuable resources. And then we keep them local and manage them by highest and best practices. We also are reducing greenhouse gas emissions and also adding economic value through reuse, through recycling, through composting. So moving on to what we did, the planning process, as Ryan has mentioned, we hosted public meetings. We had over 100 attendees involved in those meetings. We had interviews with 22 stakeholders from the Helena community. We partnered with the city to launch a Be Heard Helena page that featured a survey that elicited 225 respondents. And an idea board that ended up with 21 ideas on it. We also provided presentations to different groups from across the community. So this is Stephen Covey's circle of influence and it's, it's a, a good graphic as we move into talking about the waste reduction initiatives. It's a good visual to explanation to. Of the scope of the waste reduction initiatives that were selected for this plan. So the 10 selected initiatives that are in the plan represent those that the city of Helena has full authority to implement. Consider that the city circle of control. There are also initiatives in the plan included as an appendix that the city could explore with community partners. Or that community partners could initiate on their own, independently of the city. And those are generated during public participation process. We'd consider those within the city circle of influence. All of these initiatives emerged from the planning process, but we wanted to. Explain to you the difference between those two characteristics of the initiatives. So an organizing principle that emerged from the stakeholder process was to adopt a phased approach to implementation. This approach begins with education and incentives in the short term, phase one. Followed by new services and infrastructure in the midterm, medium term, phase two. And then. Finally, new policies as needed in the long term. And that's phase three. We're, we can talk a little bit more about phase three in a little bit. New policies as needed. So our team conducted a diversion rate analysis based on available 2019 data. And what we found was that the city of Helena diverts estimated 12,900 tons of stuff from landfills per year. It's great. That results in a diversion rate of 26% higher than the state average. So, hooray, hooray, Helena, doing great already. Want to point out on this bar chart that total projected tons there, that 12, nine in blue, that's an annual estimate. So building upon the current diversion, we estimate that successful implementation of phase one in orange there. Will allow the city to meet its 2030 goal and successful implementation of phase two in green. Will allow the city to exceed its 2040 goal. If these two phases are implemented successfully and the. Are able to achieve what we estimate, then it's possible that phase three would not be needed to attain the 50% goal. Let's take a look at how these phases roll out. So the phases indicate implementation. Once a phase begins, it continues. The phases and the initiatives in each phase, they build upon one another. So here we're seeing phase one starts in 2022. It goes in implementation to 2025, but then it keeps going. During the roll up to 2025, which is phase two, there's planning happening for phase two. So that when we hit 2025, phase two can, can launch. New services and infrastructure that runs through 2030, at which point. The city will conduct an evaluation. To assess progress toward the waste reduction goal. And then determine if the 35% by 2030 goal has been achieved. If it's determined that it has not surpassed the goal, it's not trending toward the 50% by 2040 goal. Then new policies could be evaluated for future implementation. So that's kind of the trigger for phase three. An evaluation that determines how successful phase one and phase two have been in 2030. I'll also note that phase three, new policies as needed could be evaluated for consideration if the city were to adopt a new diversion goal in the city. To. Push beyond that 50% current goal. So before we take a closer look at the initiatives in each phase, I want to point out that the plan provides further detail on the actions within each of these initiatives. So here we have phase one. Education and incentives. The implementation timeframe is 2022 to 24. And the initiatives included here are community education, community incentives, community reuse support and lead by example. Phase two, new services and infrastructure, implementation timeframe 2025 to 2030. That includes recycling and composting infrastructure. Universal residential curbside collection and self-hall diversion options. As I mentioned, there's more detail in the plan. We can get into it in a little bit, but I, I just want to give you kind of the high level right now. As I mentioned, there's more detail in the plan. We can get into it in a little bit, but I just want to give you kind of the high level right now. Here we are again, phase three, recall the trigger that we talked about. So new policies add as needed, based on a 2030 assessment, 2031 to 2040 implementation timeframe, those policies could include hauler equal volume diversion ordinance, community recycling ordinance and construction, deconstruction and demolition ordinance. So let's shift now to look at potential impacts of phase one and phase two initiatives. The impacts associated with phase three were not evaluated in this plan. So here's the bar chart we saw before. It's exactly the same thing, but now that we have a little bit more context and understanding of what phase one and phase two initiatives are, we're taking another look at it. I just want to point out three things here. One, again, the numbers are annual. Those tons are our potential estimated diversion of tons of material. The second thing I want to point out is that the initiatives are complementary. You it's it's not ideal to pick and choose a couple out of a phase and say, oh yeah, well, these sound great. Let's do those. They really work together to get the maximum impact. Our analysis is based on the confluence of the initiatives working together to provide the end result of diversion. And the third thing is phasing matters. The success of phase two relies in part on the success of phase one. Strong education and incentive programs leading up to more services for folks is how that phase two is really gonna be successful. Our team also analyzed greenhouse greenhouse gas reduction potential annually of the phase one and phase two initiatives. This infographic gives a little social math on how you can wrap your head around what 22 and a half thousand metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent looks like each year. Now let's shift to costs. So let's take a look at total program costs, and this is over the next eight years, 2022 to 2030. Phase one total program costs are about a million and a half dollars over that timeframe. Phase two total costs are a little over 16 million over that timeframe. 13 million of that phase two amount is attributed to one initiative. 2.6 it's called in the plan, universal residential curbside collection. It's a program that is a hallmark of high diversion communities everywhere. It's where recycling and composting are automatically included with landfill service to all households. So talking about costs, we understand the question of funding of Helena's solid waste recycling programs will be answered during the development of the integrated solid waste master plan. And we also recognize that costs depend on a number of factors. Our preliminary analysis is based on information from the city of Helena, as well as on certain assumptions for the purposes of presenting this strategic plan. We want to offer some more context for understanding that initiative 2.6, that that big one, universal residential curbside collection, by providing comparison of current actual costs for waste and recycling services to the proposed service. So in purple, we've got current costs. So if you look far left, currently homeowners pay $176 a year for in part for weekly trash collection. Those homeowners who also choose to subscribe to Helena Recycling Curbside Collection pay a total of $374 per year. And folks who choose to do curbside recycling and curbside composting, they pay over $700 a year. In contrast, under the proposed universal system, the cost to all Helena households, if we are looking at the solid waste assessment fee would be $382 per year. Or if trash service were to shift to in every other week, that's what EOW stands for, those acronyms, every other week. If trash service were to go to an every other week schedule, the cost of this proposed universal service would be $272 per household. So when we look at other Montana communities, the costs of the proposed universal service are quite competitive. Here we see the proposed universal service costs in blue alongside other Montana communities where residents have subscription service options for recycling, composting, comparable services. Bozeman, they're paying over 600 a year. Billings over 650 and in Missoula, $800 a year for comparable level of service. So key takeaways from our team on this project. It's been a it's been a really wonderful opportunity, work with folks in Helena on this. And really what we've learned is that everybody who was involved, Helena is ready, ready to implement a plan like this. A lot of enthusiasm. The goal that the city commission has adopted is absolutely attainable and can be done so by a successful implementation of the initiatives in this plan. And finally, initiative 2.6, universal residential collection is cost competitive with other Montana cities. So that's where it stands at the moment. Thank you so much for your time. My colleagues, Ruth Abbey, Rick Anthony and I are available to answer any questions you may have. For now, I will turn it back over to Ryan. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Jeremy. I just wanted to add is this was a good plan with a lot of public interest, a lot of public input. Very good meetings, and most of them are online. And then want to say this plan is getting done at a very good time too, because we are starting and getting through the scoping process of the integrated solid waste master plan, which Commissioner Logan is on. So we're getting close. And this will be a very vital part that is going to lead to the master plan itself and what comes out of that. What do we need to do as far as infrastructure changes and the bigger scope of everything as far as the whole solid waste system?
Excellent. Thank you, Ryan. Thank you, Mr. Drake. Are there questions from either of the commissioners or comments? I do have a couple of questions. Surprise, surprise. So on that note of the integrated solid waste master plan, do we have any indication whether the county will be interested in being as aggressive as the city has and decide the direction we're going to reduce waste and divert waste? And do you anticipate that will be a barrier in that master plan development or?
Mayor Protem is I don't know is we haven't got into the plan itself. I know that the county is very, very interested into it. At what level that they want to do, if they want to do curbside collections, curbside recycling, there's already subscription based curbside out in the county and also in composting. I do not see it as a barrier or any kind of hindrance for us to do our recycling how we want to in the city. And I see them following suit in some manner. I don't know at what level they will go to, but that is why we're doing the plan and we'll be able to figure that out.
Okay, great. Well, and I anticipate, the reason I ask too is that I think probably the cost to us changes when we're diverting more waste. And so what does that look like for, you know, financial planning for the entire solid waste management system? With them as well. And which leads to my my second question is the within here, we have that 2.85 million dollar number and annual costs between phase one and phase two, which I think is probably a pretty significant cost for most people to look at, but I also would anticipate they'll have more efficiencies within the system. So do you see this? I mean, is that? And maybe this is for Mr. Drake too and Ryan. I mean, do you see that we'll be able to achieve enough efficiencies to recoup some of that investment or, you know? That's a that's a pretty big, I mean, for a budget that's what 10, $9 million, $1 million, that's, I mean, a significant jump.
Mayor Protem, that's kind of a big loaded question that we don't know at this time of how much we are going to get as far as efficiencies, as far as savings or what we can do. We are going to look at it. I would suspect it might not be able to get that far as it as efficient, but I don't know. And, you know, then if the policy decisions is do we want to mandate universal recycling is a process that we are going to have to go through. And as we go through the master plan, what is needed, the if we need a new recycling center, what modifications to the transfer station and what that looks like is going to be, and then we'll have much better numbers to bring forward. Once we have the bigger master plans, look at our infrastructure and where we're going to put all of the recycling and handle recycling and how it is done, we'll have a better option. See if it is 2.6 million or if it's less more than what it's.
Okay, great. Mr. Drake, do you, in other communities that you've worked with, have you seen, you know, efficiency within the current system to make up for that increased cost?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. If you're speaking of the residential collection, are you speaking of that in particular or the whole deal?
I'm just looking at the the phase one and two initiatives impacts and the total annual cost for phase one and two that are listed here is at 2.85 million. It's page 23.
Gotcha. Thank you.
And if you need to get back to us, that's also fine. I'm just curious.
Where it's been required, we can get cities are making 60% or better diversion.
So one of the one of the considerations here in these costs, I'm here on page 23 now. There are there mostly staff costs and there is some capital costs in included. So getting these programs off the ground does require an investment. But the the city in order to to achieve its goal, and it's a it's a achievable goal, will need to to invest in some of these, if not all of these programs to get there. There's opportunity on the horizon in a way that there hasn't ever been before from the federal government to support these kinds of programs at the local level through the bipartisan infrastructure act. There's I believe it's $325 million becoming available to communities that are trying to recycle more, compost more. Right now, that program is in development and the the idea is that it will be grant funds will be available coming up late this year. So the the there's a shift in the dialogue at the national level right now toward the understanding that communities need to be doing this. And they can't necessarily just come up with the money right off the bat and make it happen. And so that's where this this influx of funds from the federal government could be available to communities that help like Helena that have a plan in place, know what they need to do, have some solid budget numbers to apply for that kind of funding.
Thank you. Excited that Ms. Opitz is working on these grants too, so maybe we can add that to our list. Great. Are there any other questions? Yes, Commissioner Logan.
See, I think this question is for Mr. Drake. And I'm not entirely certain how to frame it. What does this mean to the average solid waste residential user in terms of their day to day life?
For a residential collection service or just for the whole suite of programs in the plan?
Well, I would say for the whole suite, just because it sounds like ultimately we're headed toward a maybe a universal or mandated approach to this. So I think it's fair for them, for all of us to understand what that what that means in your in how you manage your your household.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. The the real thrust and emphasis at the out of the gates on this plan is education and incentives. We heard loud and clear from the community that mandates are not the way to get to where Helena needs to go. And so the what it looks like is a lot more wastes and recycling being a lot more at the forefront of people's minds, top of mind awareness, website, outreach, events, more opportunities for people to understand what they can do, how to do it and why it matters. And so i- in people's homes, it might look like people taking on new behaviors and new practices and not because they're being required to, but because they're learning, oh, this is the direction our community is headed. Oh, I didn't know this information. Now I know. This is great. Now I have, I can make more informed choices and I can I can do what the city is asking of me. So that phase three new policies as needed, we we have way down the line because we do believe that the city can achieve its goal on voluntary involvement alone. If the city is able to put the investment in the education and the incentives and then get the new services and infrastructure together to support the change in behavior that will be required.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, we will move on to public comment on this item. Is there any public comment? Yes, go ahead. Mind announcing your name for the record.
My name is Anne Brodsky. I'm on the Citizen Conservation Board and so participate with Public Works and Zero Waste Associates. Thank you, Jeremy, for the presentation. Very good. Two things, I guess, that I want to say at this point, I I had wanted to mention the federal grant money, which is really exciting, both for infrastructure, but then also for education. So it's like the two things that we're looking at as a phase one phase two. But in addition, we've been told by, so the conservation board is meeting next Thursday and we expect to have a considering a letter to be drafted to the city commission as to next steps to date. But just at this point, I guess I just want to mention that we've been told from the public works staff that, and especially in they're working on the master plan, as you know, for some county master plan. That that they are looking for a direction from a commission. So, you know, we will be making a request to you and they would like a signal from you. Are you interested in moving forward with the strategic plan and should they be incorporating that as options into the master plan? So that is direction that the staff is looking at. And the second thing I just wanted to touch on is one of the pieces, and it goes a little bit to Commissioner Logan's question about how does this look for indirectly goes to that. How does this look for the average house bear? But one of the really exciting, easy, like low hanging fruit pieces in the strategic plan is a lead by example section, and it's things that the city can do, which to me are really low hanging fruit. And I implementing enhanced waste prevention, recycling and composting in the city buildings at public spaces, at public events. And some of that stuff is happening already, but enhancing that or adopt adopting sustainable procurement for municipal purchases. And those are, they're just so easy to get going. State of Montana actually has procurement policies for waste production that the city could adopt as its own. So those are the two points I wanted to make to you and we'll be hearing from those in the conservation board shortly.
Thank you.
I haven't done anything special. I just, I think just having a conversation with friends.
Any other public comment? Okay.
Mayor Protem, I apologize. I was trying to unmute. I do have one hand raised online, Denise Roth Barber.
Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mayor Protem and members of the commission. I wanted to do a little bit of math for folks because when I first saw the, you know, the 2.6 million in phase two, you know. you know, the 2.6 million in phase two, you know, that, that is pretty concerning when you just look at that big number. So, I just wanted to share with you that currently at our $176 per year, which is quite honestly ridiculously low, although it's hard to complain about a low price. But it, that comes to, for a household. Also, in response to Commissioner Logan's question about, you know, how does this impact individuals? So, per household, we're currently paying $14.66 per month to throw away, you know, as much garbage as we want to, or that comes to $3.66 a week. And if we do the universal recycling program, that would go from $14.66 per month to $31.67 per month. So, yes, it doubles, sounds like a lot of money, but it's not as bad when you look at it like that. So, I just wanted to, to throw out those numbers for you all. Thank you.
Thanks Denise. Any other public comment? Okay, Mr. Drake, thank you, Dr. Lee Wynn, thanks for this presentation. We will go ahead and move on to recommendations from the Helena Citizens Council. Is there an HCC representative available?
That would be me.
Oh, go ahead.
Hi, yeah, so I'm actually on the Citizens Conservation Board as an HCC rep. But right now, as we speak, I'm representing HCC and we do not have any recommendations for you to consider at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to our department direction and feedback needed items. The first one is the Helena Area Community Foundation Fiscal Year 21 and 22 Grant Report, Director Danison.
Thank you, Mayor Protem and Commissioners. So, as you know, in fiscal 22, we distributed, I think it was $402,000 to the Helena Area Community Foundation. Part of that was money that we, most of that, that distribution was from CARESAC savings dollars that, that we received and the commission made the decision to utilize Helena Area Community Foundation to, to, to accept applications and distribute grant funding with one-on-one match requirements in addition to an annual distribution of $20,000. So, in fiscal 22, we gave them 402,000. In fiscal 23, we're distributing in the budget another $20,000 to the Helena Area Community Foundation. And then part of that grant from the city, the, the foundation is then coming to the city on an annual basis to report on those grants. And tonight, we have Emily Frazier from HACF to give you an update on that grants in their, in their most recent grant cycle. Emily?
Perfect, can I just be here? Does that work? I've never been here. Sure. I also have John Moore with me, he is the head of our Community Connections Committee. He's the chair of that committee that oversees most, well, all of our granting programs. The ones that we're doing in conjunction with the city and also we have a similar MOU with the county for an annual grant making program. And those were done also as an additional community member, so they were not evaluated just by Helena Area Community Foundation, but also with some, some extra eyes from around. And we, we talked a little bit, she was introduced the, the big budget numbers. And possibly unfortunately for you, we're coming to present on the small budget numbers. We have completed our annual MOU grant making, so we have, we have made grants in the, in the total of $19,000. And per our MOU, I, I submitted a report that had all the requested information. So, we can see what each organization requested and which they were granted. And as to the second MOU, which was a one-time program, which will be granting $380,000 from, that's actually in progress right now. So, we are accepting applications. When I checked right before I came to the office, we had three. But as a nonprofit executive myself, I will tell you, we will receive most of those within the last 48 hours before the deadline. That's just sort of how things roll at nonprofits when you get busy. And so, for that grant program, the granting levels are very different. These were, this first batch was grants made in the range of $500 to $2000, no match was required. And for the next round, it will be $2,000 to $14,000 with a match required. And we're really excited for that program. And while we don't have numbers or projects finished yet, and I'm very excited to see nonprofits have very creative ideas for how to recover more fully from COVID impacts. And so, we're excited to see some of those entail. But as to the numbers I have for you, I could certainly go through them. I, I don't want to take up too much of the time. I'd probably prefer to answer questions, just a couple of things I'll let you know. We did support several grantees. In our MOU, we did have a note that if any of the funding was to be granted outside of the city limits, the city manager would need to approve that. We did not need to grant outside of the city limits. We also, because we had funding from the county as well, we ran these grant cycles concurrently and were able to pick the most qualified applicants and then determine which funds to use so that we were able to city funds for city programs, county funds for county programs, and some city programs. So, we do have that list. Our process, we, we worked with an evaluation committee, whose information is also in the submitted documents. And we had a public, open to the public evaluation meeting on April 8th, where we determined our recommendations. Those recommendations were brought to the Helena Area Community Foundation Board on April 12th for board approval and the checks were sent in May to all of these nonprofits who have expressed a lot of gratitude, which I'd be happy to pour along. They've sent a lot of letters, even though we made it, I think, very clear at multiple levels, the source of the funding, all the thank you letters, I'm sure, have to us, because that's where they responded to the checks. So, I'm going to share some of that. And we are going to request a very simple reporting, hopefully to collect some stories, anecdotes, and verify that funds were used as intended, and we'll be happy to show those as well. So, again, this first year report was really what was in the MOU, and we wanted to make sure we had that all in front of you. Our next reports, we did say in the one-time MOU that we'd also definitely May 1st, but with the year being more of a question mark. Depending on how our cycle goes, we may end up granting all of that funding this summer. If we don't receive adequate requests or adequate good requests, it may take a little longer. We have allowed that program to, we made it, we presented it to the nonprofit community with a bit more time, because matches can be difficult for some nonprofits to accomplish. So, we're allowing some extra time to get that money together. So far, the ones who applied seem to have, had no trouble meeting the match. Excellent. So, John, did you have anything to add?
Well, I think you covered it well. It was an interesting process to work with city funding and county funding, have an open meeting and have, of course, the people most interested in an open meeting in that situation when people requesting money. They gave us a lot of comments and we think it was a good, adequate, fair process to introduce that. I think it was good.
We appreciate you as a city and also for the county for choosing to put grant-making authority in the hands of people who make grants. It's our main, one of our main programs. We made, we mentioned at the top of the meeting, we're also currently working on an emergency fund in partnership with United Way for blood relief. So, grants are really what we do and so we felt very privileged to be able to take that on, on behalf of the city and county. We think that the relationship that we already have with the nonprofit community is helpful. And I think that that's going to be something that if you continue to invest in having us make those grants, we'll continue to have a good transparent process that really assesses the needs of the community and we're able to make those adjustments as things happen.
Are there questions or comments from the Commissioners? I'll just say a word of thanks. I'm really excited about how this has gone. My first year on the commission, I was kind of surprised at how it had been done for so many years in terms of funding our, our contributions to community nonprofits. And I think the county felt the same way. And I think, and, and it just required an unbelievable amount of staff time that we just simply didn't have to give. So, thank you for, you know, putting together a program that is run self-offensively and all the good work we do for the community, because it's, in a community of our size, it's these types of foundation works that do, you know, do, do the heavy lifting that others just can't do. So.
Thank you. And I mean, I know, when we're talking $20,000 annually, that's, you know, I'm, I'm hearing discussions of street budgets and, you know, waste reduction budgets that are vastly larger, but this, this does matter. And it matters to do it well, and it matters to the nonprofit.
Thank you. Any public comment on this item? I'm sorry, do you have any public comment online?
Mayor Protem and Commissioners, I have no public comment online.
Great, we'll go ahead and move on to the Fire Service Work Plan update to Campbell.
Mayor Protem, Commissioners, thank you very much. I'll be as respectful of your time as I can here. Thank you, Larry, for bringing up our presentation. This evening on the agenda, two brief presentations. One regarding the Planning Committee for Creating an Executive Summary of the Fire Service Master Plan, which was presented to the commission at a previous meeting. And the second is just a short synopsis of how we're situated for the 2022 Wildland Fire Service. In 2006, ESCI Consulting Group conducted a fire service study for the City of Helena Fire Department. Out of that study, a planning committee was created by resolution by the commission to provide recommendations to the commission. Some of those recommendations were produced in an executive summary of that report. And to summarize that, that, that document is in your packet for this meeting as well, if you prefer to reference that. In 2007, the recommendations were nine additional firefighters, new fire inspector, a capital reserve replacement program, response time standard for the city, and it was identified that Station 3 would be recommended roughly in 2013. Current status as of today, in 2018, a mill levy passed that did provide six additional firefighters and a capital improvement funding mechanism for the department. In 2021, we added a fire inspector. And the response time standard in Station 3 remained to be future projects. So, that's kind of the update as to where we stand out of that 2006, 2007 process. The ballot measure to increase fire department funding to add personnel and remodel Station 2 was also born out of that 2007 process, however, that ballot measure did fail in November of 2008. Like I said, in 2018, voters approved the mill levy. And in 2021, we added the fire inspector. And again, the, the third station and response standard time that has yet to be completed in terms of the project. Our current recommendation is, we're requesting the commission direct the fire department to recreate a planning committee to review the new master plan and provide an executive summary of recommendations for commission action. A smaller committee meeting fewer times will provide for greater agility and more timely outcomes. And that's a general recommendation of the membership of that committee. The previous committee was roughly 19 members that met over the course of a year, so a dozen meetings of two hours or more. Commissioner Logan and Manager Burden were involved in that process and they may be willing to attest that we might be able to trim that down this next go-around, now that we have a framework that's been established. Alternatively, commission may choose to provide us direction about alternate composition of that committee, as well as any third-party specialists that might be advantageous to provide perspective on aspects of that executive summary. I believe a planning committee can provide the commission with an executive summary of actionable recommendations in these areas, so that we can proceed with utilizing the information, the master plan, to have a ballot initiative potentially, or whatever, whatever other outcomes that planning committee may derive. And I believe that's it for that portion.
Any questions from, or comments from the commission?
Perhaps a comment, if I may? I, I think this is a great idea. You know, I, I think it's the commission of essentially laypeople relative to the fire service goes and relative to the size of the master plan that's presented to us, I think makes a lot of sense for experts in the community to go through and, and stakeholders and sort of glean from that master plan, you know, doable recommendations to the, to the commission. So, I really appreciate that. And as, as your presentation alluded to, it's, it's, you know, a number of the recommendations from, coming out of that 2007 plan have largely been tackled. And so, you know, in terms of the scope and, you know, the number of meetings and all that, I think, I don't think it's going to be as heavy a lift. So, that sounds good to me. So, maybe a question for the manager. So, in terms of directing for, you know, this recommendation for a planning committee, what, how do we take that action?
Mayor Protem, Commissioner Logan, I, I would suggest that if there is no opposition among the commission, and that if you want to add some details, now would be a time to do it. But if there's no opposition, I would consider that approval to proceed.
Commissioner Reed, do you have any thoughts or comments?
I couldn't hear Commissioner Logan, so I, I don't know.
He, he asked what the next steps would be. And then Manager Burden responded with his answer.
So, I'm, I'm not sure what I'm weighing in on.
Whether, whether there's additional input that you, you would have on, on this recommendation to start moving forward in that the, the members of the committee and the areas of analysis, does that summarize it? Yeah, he's shaking his head yes.
No objection.
Okay. I guess, just one quick question I would have. I know on here, it includes the funding mechanisms. And obviously, this doesn't, this does not happen in a vacuum. And there are a few other items that could potentially be coming up for consideration to go to the voters, specifically after the Police Department Staffing Study. And then potential Parks District, etc. I guess, how do we manage those type of, I mean, I don't know if it happens within this conversation, but I think that, you know, seeing it holistically and being strategic about recognizing our needs, which are, you know, from that fire study, very clear. It will also probably be very clear when we get the, the Police Department Staffing Study and then the conversations that continue with the Parks Board. How do we, how would you recommend we start managing those type of discussions moving forward?
Mayor Protem, Commissioners. Mayor Protem, commissioners, I think that. In some respect, these are moving forward, some are further along than others. But I recognize that the police staffing study, the fire study, and. Wherever we're at with the discussion on the city-county park border at district. We all know that's going on, and that there are competing priorities. That the commission's going to have to weigh in on, and at the same time, I would add to that. That we will be reviewing all of the capital improvement plans, and there will be competing priorities between and among those plans as well. After ARPA, EPIV allocated and et cetera. And so rates and bonds and what we'll try to do is put that structure in place. So even if one decision's not ready, you know that there are competing interests as we tee up. Next year's budget discussions.
I do think, just one point of feedback I'd have, I'm one hundred percent in favor of moving forward in this direction, and I think we're. Fortunate to have a member of the commission who knows what all of this means as well.
And he's been in the ladder truck and all that.
Yes. I, I guess I would be interested in when things start coming back, having kind of a historic view of. What's passed when it's gone to the voters and why, and I don't know all of the, when it comes for, for cities, I don't know what. MCA says, I know, like for school, for school district bonds, you can't be, you have to be careful about what the district says beyond, you know, information. Same, okay. Okay, so I, I guess my question would be, what is the, I, I'd just be interested in seeing the historical picture in terms of what passed and. What was on the ballot at the same time and some of those considerations, so that we, when we are looking at these competing interests, which I think. All of them are obviously necessary and worthy interest, that we can do it in a manner that. Is, is a smart way forward.
Mayor Protem, I understand what you're asking for, and I think certainly we can give not only a legal. Background for the commissioners, if you go down path A, here's what's required, et cetera, B, C. I'll have to think about how to approach the historical comparison.
I mean, I know like two thousand and eight on, but I, everything that happened before that is not something that I, you know, I mean, the communities changed some, but. I would say probably has. Similar, I mean, everyone has to, you know. We're not balancing our checkbook, we're balancing our spreadsheets now. You know what I, I mean, I think that similar interests would prevail. I don't know, Chief Campbell, it looks like you're about to say something.
Full of points that kind of alludes to that question was the. Matter about a third party or specialist being involved in this process. There are PR firms that have public safety experience that do data analysis into those exact types of things. To provide a better historical context of what millage is compared to what competing interests have historically. Been approved or disapproved. So that is a potential option in the city manager, and I would definitely engage in that discussion of how that will come together, what that will look like.
Great. Appreciate it, any final comments? Is there any public comment on this item? Madam clerk, do you have any online?
Mayor Protem, commissioners, I have no comment online.
Okay, we will.
So Mayor Protem, I would just. Say based on this conversation that the chief has the ability to proceed with the recommendation.
Moving on to the next item, wildland urban interface update.
Tim, commissioners, again, thank you. This will be brief as well. It's my understanding that historically, the fire chief would provide an annual update and discussion opportunity. For the commission around the wildland urban interface. As the new fire chief for the city of Helena, I wanted to better understand and be able to be responsive to the community's concerns. Regarding Helena's well-down urban interface, so back in November, or excuse me, in February, we had a. A meeting of stakeholders in this room to kind of get a better sense of what the community's. Perspective tolerances are, concerns around the urban interface. In your packets are a synopsis of the notes from that stakeholder meeting. The group consensus was generally that the property owners reducing fuels. And hardening their structures from fire would be the most impactful measure a community could take in general. Open lands under the Parks Department has been leading by example with nearly all seventeen hundred timbered acres. Of city lands receiving first treatment of fuels reduction. And Mr. Langsather can speak to that in greater detail if there are any questions there. The strength of your Helena Fire Department is in our two staff stations with good proximity to wildland urban interface areas. Early detection, response and extinguishment are critical in preventing a small-scale incident. From becoming something more substantial. Although these steps are vital for successful initial attack, fire behavior predictability is typically based on fuel. Weather and topography of the area burning. Utilizing mutual aid resources is another step in ensuring adequate initial attack resources are available. That also means being a good mutually partner, which requires the fire department to respond to requests for service in other communities' areas as well. Such as Denton, Montana last year. Additional and internal measures have been to improve department personnel training and certification practices. Seeking out grant funding for equipment enhancement opportunities such as type-three engine grant application. And in the near future, utilizing department staff and apparatus as resource for deployments in and out of state for fire incidents. Historically, Helena Fire would not commit resources out of our community due to the expense to cover the cost of the backfill of the personnel. Due to changes in how these incidents are funded, we now anticipate a possible revenue and hands-on experience opportunity. By sending Helena Fire resources out of the area to fight wildland fires.
Any questions from the commissioners? Mr. Logan.
Sure. Let me get a little closer to the mic here. Hopefully, this will pick up a little bit better. Could Chief Campbell, could you speak a little bit, I know that there have been some efforts relative to your fire prevention bureau. Of. Efforts to. Maybe for Helena Fire to kind of deal with issues in the wildland urban interface in terms of education or. Any other efforts that may be underway.
Mayor Protem, commissioners. Adding the fire inspector to the fire prevention bureau has been a force multiplier. It's allowed the distribution of the work of that bureau to now include a more robust stance on public education. As it relates to fire prevention, particularly in the urban interface. So we've seen a growing partnership with our public information officer in developing public service announcements around. Urban interface preparation, just household understanding of their responsibilities and requirements, as well as an initiative to. Provide information to the community about evacuation routes and what those areas look like and do. Also in concert with our law enforcement partners, so hopefully that answers your.
Yes, it does, and thank you, and I appreciate. The initiative and, and the efforts that are underway, I hope over time that. They continue to grow as, as possible. Because I think it is, you know, it's a significant risk to Helena, and, and I think. Helenans may not be entirely. Aware of it. So, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you. Moving on to our last item here, update on the SRO contract, Chief Petty.
Mayor Protem, commissioners. Excuse me. I met with the city attorney last week on the agreement, she had some questions for MMI insurance company or. Our insurance. We spoke with them, she sent over the agreement to them, we actually just got back the agreement from them with their changes. And I believe a certificate was attached to it to show what the city has for insurance. I'm going to send those documents over probably tomorrow to the school district, so. The update was just right before this, we received all that information back, and I'll be sending that over to the school district. Hoping the very minor changes that occurred, I think we're, both sides are in complete agreement of what's going to move forward. It's just little language details now to where we're at, and. I'll wait back to hear from them, and they were very responsive the last time, and I got it back within a week or so after their side looked at it. So I'm hoping in the next few weeks, we have something signed.
Any comments or question from the commission? I guess just one question I would have, would you characterize the discussions with the school board or the school district, not necessarily the board, as. Us being on the same page throughout the conversation?
Absolutely, very, very productive, and we're speaking the same language, except when we get to the attorneys, but.
No one speaks their language.
There's some, there's some nitpicking there, but other than that, we're, we're completely on the same page and moving forward with it.
Great.
I can say. I'd like to say thanks for following. Along on this for, as, as, as necessary, but I think it's definitely. On that part of the commission of valued program. I'm confident that it's a valued program within the community, and, and so I'm glad to see it sort of. Formally recognized and, and appreciate the work done for this, thank you.
One logistics question I have. So previously, the discussion was a MOU could be signed by the city manager. I don't know if that's still the route we're taking, I believe that their MOU will likely go to their school board. But do we have clarity on what that process looks like when adoption comes forward?
Mayor Protem, commissioner, yes, I think it requires approval. You know, it's a major policy decision, it requires resources.
Any final comments or questions from the commission on this item?
Mayor Protem.
Commissioner Reed.
I'm sorry, I had a hard time hearing the last thing, what, I think what I heard is that the commission will be approving the final MOU, is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Any public comment on this item? Okay, any public comment on any item not discussed during this meeting?
Mayor Protem, commissioners, I have no written or written public comment or hands raised.
Okay, any final questions or comments from the commission? Like that, we are adjourned, thanks everyone. Well, I don't know, I texted.